And follow meetings order. It is seven thirty one on August first, twenty twenty three, the regular city council meeting of the city of West Liberty, Iowa. We have tonight for a vote called Mayor Protem, Kara McFerrin, and city council members Josh Gilz and Dana Dominguez. I'll ask for a approval of agenda.
Motion to approve agenda, check it.
Moving consecutive to approve the agenda that everyone did the.
No, only you did.
Only.
Because they would have to ask for a motion that way.
What'll make sure I understand what you're.
Yep, so exactly whatever on there you'll ask for a motion. To amend to approve the agenda with the two amendments, striking letter J and adding letter M.
Ah, okay, yeah, and I'm the only one who has that. Okay, so we did have one. Uh, small last minute update to this, which is a. It allowed because of what it is, so it's seven M. And the change order amount went down to the Columbus Street sidewalk improvements. So maybe you could amend your motion. To the approving agenda, striking letter J and adding letter M. Seven J, seven M. Does that work?
Yeah.
A mends or motion like that?
Okay, I'm gonna amend my motion. Striking seven J, adding seven M for the changeover for the amount of sixty seven thousand seven hundred eleven. Second.
Okay, moving consecutive to approve the agenda with this amendment. Any discussion? Someone understand that? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries three to zero. I'll ask for an approval of the consent agenda. More than preference than agenda.
Second.
Moving consecutive to approve the consent agendas includes the city council meeting minutes. Tomorrow last meeting, is there any discussion?
Um, only the, 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 it reflected in the minutes you've got it to where. It was left off, Ashley Smith was left off at the beginning of the minutes of council member's absent. Exactly.
Good, very good. Okay. Any other discussion? Well, that's been noted.
You guys have the updated minutes in your binder, they should be on the front side, and they were updated on seven twenty four.
Excellent. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda including the city council meeting minutes. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries three to zero. We'll move on to reports and starting with our city engineer Leo Foley.
Okay. So I guess first report that isn't on there is the well number two project. You've driven by, you've seen they've started on putting the new door and the new driveway in. We're still working on the well actually on getting some of the parts that are being delayed. Uh, meaning the control panel primarily. Uh, I do have a submitted, they just gave me for one, so I need to be reviewing that. And then we need to probably talk to. There's been a water problem in the, in the well house. We thought we could build the wall inside and protect the wall. Um, our contractor saying that might be tough to do. I haven't made an official visit and figure that out yet. But I know that the new roof is coming at some time. So we've probably got to get with lead next week and talk about when the roof's gonna come, when the wall, should we wait on the wall or not, but. We're gonna have them do all the work they can do except for the interior wall. And I thought we could get away with it. I've been in that place before when I saw water coming in. But I guess the last huge rain you had, the water came in a lot more, so. We've got to do a little, little, little more reconnaissance on that one. That's, that's well number two.
Okay, um, city manager Girth, do you want?
I was just gonna say, I think the bigger issue is is when we have winds with driving rain. That seems to be where the problem is at mostly with exceptions.
Okay.
Um, but we'll, I'll keep together with the Yoda, so we'll, we'll talk that through more thoroughly.
And we've got a, I guess I'll wait on the, to talk about, if you don't mind, I can wait to talk about. Uh, Rainbow and Maxon when we talk about the changeover.
Sure, yeah.
And Naughty Circle when we change about the schedule.
Okay.
I think that's all I have for them.
Okay, excellent. Any questions for Mr. Foley? Uh, we won't have any city staff reports tonight. We had those, I guess, all of them in our last, uh, meeting, any committee meetings that need to report.
Have they updated on the, on the consultant? I'll leave that up to you, mayor.
I, I, it's still in process. I don't have anything to add tonight. Um. We'll move on to vendor voucher claims. Uh, accept a motion to approve the vendor voucher claims is number one.
Motion to approve vendor voucher claims list number one.
Second. Moving consecutive to approve vendor voucher claims is number one, name of. Eight hundred ninety seven thousand three hundred eighty eight dollars and seventy five cents. Questions or discussion? Somebody always has questions about that. Not today. I had one, lawn care stuff, are we not able to? Handle all that in-house and more?
Um, which ones typically are?
Oh, there's just, I, I don't recall being on this much lawn care on here, is that?
Typically, typically the lawn care has to do with, um, like treatment, like treating for weeds. Yeah, yeah, for weeds or, yeah, it's, that's the lawn care.
Yeah.
Service that we receive during the spring.
That makes sense. Gotcha. Okay, I was thinking it was like.
Nope, we seasonal staff, we staff all of that.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the vendor vouch claims this number one. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries three to zero. Public comments and correspondence. Is there anyone here in the room with public comments or correspondence? Okay, if none, uh, go around the room here for city council, Mr. Councilman Schultz.
I don't have anything today.
All right. That's one of the mains.
Yes.
I would like to just, um, let you all know, I did bathroom duty for RagBri and we got so many compliments from the writer. Of the availability of porta potties because I thought maybe we're going a little overboard when we were discussing it. But I think we had just the right amount because. I mean, there were times when every single one of them was full, but the, the weight was very minimal for the writers. And we were able to clean, uh, keep them stocked and clean much better than if there was only a few of them being utilized by thousands of people. So good job on that call. I don't know who it was, it was either Sherry or Lee, but good job. You did the right thing and we got lots of compliments.
Twenty eight, wait. Good, yeah, excellent.
Being a former participant, yes, you know that that's a part of it. Yeah.
That's the best kind of fellow comment right there.
You didn't want a prize for best porta potty service, that's for sure.
I don't know that, it's a hard one because I think the water department won a lot of. You know.
For those hand washing stations.
For their water.
The refill, yeah.
Yeah.
Pool station. That was very much appreciated too.
We can kind of talk about, yeah, that's good, I'm glad, yes.
Yeah, my wife and I were stationed there at the water, uh, refill station, Charles from the chamber asked us to, to be there. And the, the crew in water department was there monitoring S Street as well, so. Um, yeah, a lot of compliments. Um, a couple people said, this is the best water station we've seen the whole trip. You know, because it was just, I think it was, it was the right size, you know, it was tall, it was well situated, lots of room.
Grass versus PVC because that makes a big difference in your water taste too. Um, you don't get a plastic taste from when they, from what they use.
Sure.
Um, PVC leaves it kind of a, just so it has a plastic taste to it, so that was.
Very well done. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. House Norman McCarran?
Um. I just wanted to let you know that the individuals that had the public comments last time regarding the alley on. Between their and Moore Street were very pleased that Adam reached out. And they were very happy that the city reached out to help resolve. The alley issues. And then I was wondering on the meeting minutes from last week, we had talked about that welcome West Liberty sign, I'm sorry. Didn't, was there any answer to that?
Staff went out and cleaned up around the sign. Um, that's what. That's what was communicated to me that they were gonna trim back all of the overgrowth around the sign, yeah. But I hadn't had an opportunity to look at any other history on that sign. Um, Adam just did really real quickly that while they were out doing trimming and stuff, that they were gonna. Try their best to get to, get around the sign to get it cleaned up, so.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
I did go and look at it, and it does have. On the bottom, a, a. Emblem for the gun club and for Lions and for Rotary. So I don't know. Who, I don't know if anybody knows, I think I remember talking about that sign when I was on city council.
I think the history was Rotary and Lions, I think it was a shared, I don't remember the gun club being a part of it. But I do remember that the history had come where the two organizations supported the original sign. But I don't know other than the gun club just directing where they're located right there, but yeah.
Does seem like something we should either. You know, there needs to be a maintenance plan for it, or else it should come down, right? So I don't know if that's us maintaining it.
Yeah, I guess that would be my second question.
Maybe reaching out to those organizations to see if they wanna take it on.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I don't know if that's something that the president of Rotary who's in the room would. Wanna maybe take back to the club perhaps?
Other perks, you could take it to building and grounds committee and maybe have a further discussion on upgrading the signage. Um, maybe it's a partnership with Rotary in my, I mean, maybe it's partnership to do something. You know, updated out there, so.
Yeah.
Maybe with the country club, looking for signage.
Good to bring in, that you brought it up. Keep asking. Get that resolved.
Okay.
Anything else?
Uh, that's all for now.
Great. That's good. Um, I don't have anything tonight. City manager Girth, do you have anything to public comments or?
Yeah, um, so I received a phone call from, uh, Mrs. Browning, Lisa Browning. Um, regarding the RagBri event, um, she. Had concerns with, um, the after cleanup process.
Hmm.
Um. And I, I communicated with her, one of her concerns was that there was still debris on the streets. And that there was a lot of debris on the sidewalks. And, um, she was disappointed that she had to make the phone call to communicate with city hall with regards to that. I had, can we, I, I answered her back to let her know that the street sweeper had been out. Unfortunately, um, it was not able to get all of, it was pancake batter and syrup. And it was not able to get all of that, um, and I did take accountability. I said, I honestly did not think. About the sidewalks, about cleaning the sidewalks because our street sweeper. Clearly does not clean sidewalks too. Um, but I sent a message out today to the department heads and asked for their assistance and right away, uh. Uh, Danny Goodell responded from the water department, and so they took the sewer back out, which has a, a pressure hose on it. And so then they were able to walk down the sidewalk and get it, um. Hosed off and they even did additional on the street where the sweeper wasn't able to get some of that, so we were able to resolve that today. The other concern was there was some trash that, um, that our staff was not able to get all collected. It was a small amount. I told our, at, at the, on Saturday, I had told the street staff that. That would be okay if they wanted to come back in early Sunday morning. My purpose for that was is that it was an obnoxious amount of trash. They had been out. Um, you know, early morning trying to pick up debris from the storm fixing, you know, putting our. High blows back up and also then being out to set and so. I explained to her again, I'll take accountability for that because I allowed them to wait because they had been in long hours already, so, um. And then, um, then she had some additional, you know, comments and I recommended that maybe through their RagBri committee. That they could put this information together and submit a report to council, so then we can have that documented for future events, so. Um.
That sounds good, and the thing about doing these big events is. You know, it's hard to practice for it, right? Because it's such a rare event and it's so massive, but the more we do it, the better we do get, you know, and I think. Overall, I mean, I'm sure there were things that definitely could be improved, but it seems like city just did a really nice job.
Yeah, I think all parties, everyone involved, I think everybody did, you know. An amazingly great job considering the amount of participants and then still trying to maintain. You know, traffic needing to go where they needed to go, and people not aware that the event was going on, um. So I, I, at the end of the day, I think that, you know, everybody did, and I think, and again, I think all of those involved in the communication process was good, so.
That's great, and it's probably a good time just to give a shout out to the Chamber of Commerce and Charles Brook for leading that. I remember when, when he came in and members of the chamber came in. Uh. And you know, we were deciding if we wanted to do this or not, and it was a huge task to take on, and I was so, I was thinking. Chamber's gonna take this on, it's gonna work. If they're not gonna take it on, there's this, you know, how else would we do this, so. Big, huge thanks to the Chamber of Commerce for taking that on and taking the lead on it. City pitched in, bringing in all the employees, um, you know, overtime to make that happen. Emergency services were coordinating for a long time beforehand, getting all that set up and. Um, yeah.
Kara did a good job with volunteers too. She was there from sunup, sundown, so, yeah, I don't know about sundown, but you know. Yeah, there were a lot of volunteers I saw that were picking up trash throughout and a lot of high school kids too that were volunteering, so that was good to see.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot to come together and coordinate and have it run smoothly without, you know, I mean, you're gonna have a little bit of here and there, but. Again, like I said, I mean, you could have asked for, you know, when, especially when you're getting, um, all the responses that we're getting about from the positives of. Um, you know, that many people coming through our community and leaving that impression, so I think that, that NS that feels really good. Um. So yeah, outside of that, the only thing I had quickly to follow up was, um, with council member Schultz. Uh, did send that information with regards to the, uh, email that you received about the dog. And that had been sent over to the police department and I have not had a follow up to find out more information, but I will get that for you. Um, I do have a point to schedule time with Leo to talk about the parallel parking. So we can follow up with, uh, Burke Ventures in regards to that question. And I also wanted to thank, uh, Mr. Reed and Dana reached out to me the night of the storm. And gave me, um, some updates so that we were able to coordinate quickly to with. Our vendor on the outhouses and staff and so we can get those things, so I appreciate that. And then, um. Outside of that, I think that's, you know, like I said, what we would do is we'll collect some reports from folks on RagBri and. Any of that additional information and bring forward, so.
Excellent.
Report to file, so.
Great. City clerk for, public comments and correspondence?
I've actually had a couple of items and they're all to do with our cemetery, so, um, one person called in. Because there's a tree that was removed in the center of our south addition, our southeast addition, and ants are coming out of it. So I sent Nick down, Nick is going to take a look at it. We still need to grind the stump out of there, but they were gonna do some treatment because they were climbing over the stones. Um, he said, but he would get that on the list to be taken care of. The other problem was with our columbarium. Our columbarium doors that were sent from the company didn't fit. And so the additional ones that they had, um, Mac House did amazing and worked with the company to get them cut down and now all of our doors are in there. So.
Okay.
It was a huge task, uh, last Thursday, spent a lot of time trying to get those taken care of. Uh, we had one family member who had put their loved one in there and the door didn't fit properly. And so we had to make sure that we got everything taken care of, so. Going forward, we now have the correct sized doors because they're all coming off the units, um, so the additional ones they have up there. So those are basically the two items that I've had, um, where people have had comments or have called in for.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to new business. Uh, item seven A. We're gonna handle these a little bit differently. I was talking to, uh, city clerk about how to. Bring these to the table when it says discussion, appropriate action. Previously, we were kind of having a motion to bring it to the table. We'll just discuss it and then the motion will be, you know, uh, according to what you wanna do as a council. So the first one, seven A, is a event assistance and street closure, um, request. And I don't know if you wanna walk us through kind of what the request is there, and this is typical, et cetera.
So this is an event request, um, and, um, from St. Joseph's with regards to, um, I'm sorry. This has to view, they usually have a couple of.
Six street between Calhoun and Clay.
Yeah. I think it's for their annual, for the walk, right? Uh, I thought it was, it's in September third, so it's over Labor Day weekend, it's for their annual, like, um. They do, uh, event to fundraiser that they serve food and have music. They used to do it in downtown, yeah, but now they moved it in front of the church, yeah, from six on that block right outside the church.
And it's in coordination, like.
The weekend, yeah.
Uh, but it's, it's the separate Latinos like festival because now they hold it at the church versus in the downtown area.
Yes, they're two separate entities.
Right.
Together.
And this one is specifically the church.
This is just the church, this event, they, yes, just, at the church.
Okay, and that's, yeah, safe, that's right in front of the.
I think they started doing this a couple.
Well, you have to, for sure.
Yeah, it was right after COVID because that's when I think they finally changed and separated the two events. So. And they didn't see that there were any issues with that last year.
Okay. Any questions or questions about that? Is there a motion to approve this request?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moving a second to approve this event assistance, assistance and street closure request. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries three to zero, followed by seven B. This is a, uh, another event assistance and street closure request. For August twelfth. With the rain date, uh.
Now, there is no way. Yeah.
It's the same day. And this is, uh, closing the street. Between Jeff's Market and. What I would call Jan's Flower Yard, I don't know that property is.
So Spencer Street, just that one block, right? It's what it looks like, between third and that alleyway, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is it just, I mean, he has it circled one lane? Clearly, it's one lane that's circled, so does that mean that they? They don't mind, I mean, they want the other lane open or they're not using that lane or?
Again, I did not have a lot of communication. It was just dropped off to the front office staff. Um, I did communicate and somebody was going to be here. I do not see anyone. Here though, so I'm not a hundred percent sure. I can.
Well, I can work with stuff because I think best practice for safety here would be to close.
Entire.
The entire section, and it's similar to what in previous years we did the farmer's market on that section. And so I would just recommend that we would follow the same closure that we did and close off, um, just that section of Spencer Street. Um, but we're gonna have to make sure they coordinate with Jeffs to let them know. Um.
Yeah, because.
Or I can talk to Aaron and let him know that.
The parking lot exit is right there on Spencer.
Yeah, and so I can go in and make sure, like, you know, to. To talk to them and let them know about this date and let them know that there'll be a closure on that section of Spencer. And so just for safety purposes, they won't be able to exit from there. They'll have to go down below and exit. Which it's worked out in the past, but at the same time, I think. It's better to have both sides of the street closed for a safety perspective.
Sure.
I don't know if they were, I mean, again, it would be a question of, I can't imagine that they were expecting people just to drive up and pick up supplies.
That was my only question because it looks like it's free school supplies, so that was, that was my question is if they're actually expecting a drive through path thing.
Yeah, but at the same time, if that's what they're looking to do, I would still have them manage like with cones. For vehicles because I can see traffic coming out of Jeff's. Or somebody not understanding that and they're causing some, so I think we'd have to look at some traffic control there.
Yeah, I don't know what.
My recommendation is that they wouldn't be doing a drive through, that it would be, you would have to walk up. Because they're not donating, they're picking up supplies.
Hmm. And they also have a tent for refreshments, if it's like. They're probably expecting foot traffic.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I think city all can, you guys can work out the details here, but. Uh, there are other questions about, about this or a motion to approve?
Let's go through.
Second. Hey, there's a motion, a second to approve this event assistance and street closure request. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries three to zero. We have seven C. Which is a reimbursement request for Angela Tots. A swim lesson they paid for, which they were not able to attend, unfortunately, the swimming classes. By the way, my kids go to those swim classes and they're, they're so good. I can hear it from my house. Kelly Morrison.
Chicken, airplane, pencil. Chicken, airplane.
And so this year I went and watched my kids and learned what the chicken, airplane, pencil. And who is, is, fun to watch.
I mean.
She does a good job, Kelly, I mean, those kids, they're. They're good swimmers.
And it's no mistake, and it's Kelly.
Oh, yeah, she definitely has the, the voice to project it. Um, this, uh, yeah, I don't, you wanna mention anything about this? Leah, I don't.
I'll refer over to this thing quick because I wasn't.
Okay.
So. Yep, so I actually spoke, Kara had asked about it earlier, um, so it actually was that when she paid. They, she thought she was gonna have the two weeks, but there wasn't enough funding for both of the weeks, and so Kelly reached out to her and talked with her.
Oh, I see.
But all of them, so after the initial opening of the pool, the pool handles all of those swim lessons. That's why it's in here as a request. Typically, you would see an action item from me. But this is a request from the pool since she wasn't able to do it to be able to refund there.
So I mean, uh, city council usually is pretty careful about things like this so that you don't open a door to cruddy, gritty, uh, requests that. Like this, what's your recommendation with this specific, uh, item?
This one, I would, I, my recommendation would be to pay her back for that portion.
Because of the way it happened.
Because of how it happened and because of how it was, so her child actually bought, brought the funding to the pool. Um, Kelly stated that their money was more, but the child didn't want to change back to carry it, so I would recommend. That we approve it.
Yeah, any other discussion or questions from council? Is there a motion to approve this reimbursement request?
Motion.
Second. Moving a second to approve the reimbursement request, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries three to zero. Hey, seven D, we have a proposed agreement. Between the city of West Liberty and Brad Acres for the Meadows Development. This is not the actual agreement, that will come later, but, uh, this is. City manager's write-up of what you and Brad have worked out and would like to do, so. I'm sure all of you got a chance to, to read it. And Leah, I think it's pretty straightforward unless you wanna add something, it's, I think it's pretty, uh.
No, I just entertain if you have any questions pertaining, and again, as mayor has communicated, this is, this is just, um. My request to proceed forward with drafting an agreement, uh, with our city attorney. Um, I just wanted to, you know, have that direction from council that to proceed or not to proceed, um. And when this originally started, there was requests for rebate for electric utility, which we do not have that a program in place. And I think I explained that in there, you know, this would expedite, you know, based on that. And I think I explained that in there, you know, this would expedite, you know, based on that specific project um. Just an agreement to, you know, again, we wanna promote housing. Uh this is a form of unaffordable housing and um you know, and and design it specific to that project.
Yeah. So it's my understanding of it is sometimes with a a build out like this, the utility provider would do it um either at no cost because they're getting the customers or at the developer's cost, but then the rebate program would pay the developer back as the customers come online. And so just so you understand, council, that's kind of typically, I, it's my understanding, those are two typical ways that it's done so that the developer doesn't end up footing a whole bill. This is kind of, I understand your a- approach to it is kind of a meet in the middle type of thing because those aren't very, it's no seem very feasible for this project. Um is that fair to say?
Mm-hmm.
Um.
I mean, for us, I mean, if in the bigger picture of it, either way we're going, the city's going to pay for this.
Mm-hmm.
You know, for it. And so for me, I believe that, you know, just being by transparent and upfront and saying, we're gonna pay for this upfront and this will be your portion and this will be our portion. And then we're not, you know, having those additional steps to make sure that we've got you know, contractual payments set up over a period of time, making sure that we're meeting those. It's just a very clean um way. Again, it's, it's the city's equipment, it's the city's asset. Um you know, we have ownership, we have a utility easement. Um the only thing would be is the labor is the developer's cost for the installation. Um and the other complicated situation with this is that um this project is not in a position to do TIF uh because the property that the home's set on are not owned by the homeowner.
Right.
So that's why it, that's why it makes it a more unique situation
Sure.
that we wanna, you know, look at again, designing an agreement um around the specific developments.
That makes sense. I think, I think uh, I mean, the the developer would prefer obviously to have city carry all of the cost. And so I think it's worthwhile for, and I I talked with Brad about this and he said, he said, I trust Lee and I, you know, he's okay with this. Um and so I think that's, that's great. Uh I do think we should consider looking into ways, you know, the city can we need all the development we can get so the city can cover more of that and bring more customers online. I think that's worthwhile trying to see if, if we can do that.
I agree, Mayor. I think um again, I I I putting that on our prior, you know, project list
Yeah.
to develop that rebate program and, you know, look at those um opportunities. Um as you stated, and and I know that's more discussion to be had with our economic development. You know, putting together packages, we had originally spoke to this as putting together packages based on you know, the the overall development cost. Um like, for example, we can do with you know, the by sea development, we're, we're looking at a TIP program. So that provides an opportunity for some different direction there where this one, you know, I don't wanna say, you know, it's a smaller development, but it still has, you know, it still has a cost to it, so.
And just so council is aware, the, the, and correct me if I'm missing a piece of this, anybody, but um in this development, it is private. So the developer is gonna own the land, the, the folks will own their home, but they'll pay a lot rent uh for the land. The developer will maintain the streets and all of the infrastructure, water, sewer and all of the infrastructure except for electric, which is owned by the city and maintained by the city through an easement. Understand that correctly?
So the water and the elect, so the water lines and the um that are the mains would be maintained because it's the city water, electric or city utility. Um but the infrastructure, the thing inside the park.
Inside the park, yeah.
Yeah.
I just had a question. It said that potential utility river is five hundred dollar monthly. That seems pretty high to me.
I was just, and I was averaging because a lot of homes, again, you don't know if they're gonna have just a family of two, a family of five or potentially more. So, you know, and I, you know, looking that from I don't know, I know that some of um our manufactured homes sometimes have a little higher cost. And I don't know if that's because heating and cooling may be different, but I was just taking an average and averaging that out.
Okay.
Yeah, it's good to discuss all this because I think, I appreciate your write-up here uh Lee, because it's helpful to kind of understand your thought process. And I think it's helpful for us all to understand how this stuff kind of fits together. Mr. Brooks, is there anything you'd like to add on this? And you know, you've been working on a lot of these development projects just for our education or?
Yeah, I think this is a necessary measure, but as was, as was brought up, this is a mandate, right? So I would encourage council to take swift action on something.
And then it says forty-one homes on number two, but then the, in the last paragraph, it says forty-eight homes. I don't know if that's.
It was probably, it was a typo.
Okay.
Yep.
It is forty, it is eventually to be forty-one homes. And then I think they have an outbuilding. And yeah, as far as I know, they have an outbuilding too.
We have an outbuilding for that will have, house a computer with internet. So if there's families that can't have internet at their home, they can use that as a study room.
Oh, sounds nice.
Is it a shelter or?
Yeah.
Interesting. Like it. Okay, so you're looking for a um consensus or a motion from council to proceed with writing the development agreement as you've outlined here. Is that fair to say?
And I just would add to that, the concern that you had addressed with me, I think that um with drafting this agreement, I can speak to the electric superintendent and see if he could provide me, you know, and some type of an idea of what hours.
Yeah.
So we can put something in the agreement um that maybe would also help um with the developer to to know that these are the estimated hours, so that way they have a better understanding of what we're looking at from that perspective.
I think that's a good idea. Uh Mr. Akers had said, the only concern he had was that he'd like to know, since he's paying the labor costs, kind of what is he getting into there?
Mm-hmm.
Um which obviously makes sense. I would always ask for an estimate before I sign up for a project.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh so that, that would be great if I could just be.
Yeah, and the number three, the fee for tapping, do we need to put a fee, like an actual number on there?
We have an actual fee um for that. And so I just wanted to have, I needed an opportunity to go back through historic um communications because I do not know what had originally been communicated in there.
So that was.
But I'll make sure that we put that um. I mean, and I don't wanna stay right off shooting from the, you know, round the tongue, but we can make sure that we present that in there. If it's already been paid for, you know, these are the costs that you've already covered so far for that tapping fee and, yeah.
Sounds good.
Makes sense.
I would also, including here, I will probably, I will wanna also document, there has been um numerous engineer costs, uh because the city has covered those engineer costs going back and forth. Um trying to work through electric. Um and then we also had um engineer studies from, and I think it will be good also from our side of it to show Mr. Akers, you know, our, the city's investment total um for these. I'm not trying to say, you know, we want you to, I just want him, that any developer to understand, you know, these are a lot of these preliminary costs or costs that the city's already invested in um to make this a successful development and as our partnership with the developer. So we have, and likewise with council, so we have a full understanding and there's that transparency of what the overall cost total um for that project, so.
That makes sense. I know this is taking a lot of work, just catching up and getting all these development projects uh rolling and sorting out problems, so. Thanks for diving into that, Lee.
Mm-hmm.
Um any other discussion or questions about that? Otherwise, uh I would, I think we're looking for a motion to authorize city manager to proceed as written.
Motion to, I will authorize city manager to proceed as discussed, written, second.
Okay, it's moved in second then to uh authorize city manager first to proceed with this development agreement as she has eliminated here. Any further discussion? All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries three to zero. We have item seventy, a resolution to disperse the additional twenty-five thousand to Wili as proposed in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Is, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve this resolution. Uh any discussion? Think this is straightforward. You approved it in the budget to additional, uh add some additional funding to Wili.
So Mr. Mayor, we're um putting this through in a resolution because it is a separate payment from the city outside of our already established um tax increment finance funding. So that way we have a clear record that the finance, the, the taxes, property taxes supporting that um portion of the fifty-three, oh boy.
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three and some change. Um that's a part of our tax increment. And then this is the utility side doing the additional funding. Because again, with economic development increases, utility revenue. Um historically, that's where it used to a hundred percent came from. And then we were able to move towards utilizing some tax dollars for economic development, but at our discussion per budget, we, we've definitely seen the support um where we could look at doing some additional funding.
So this twenty-five is going to be straight from electric from.
Electric, water and.
Utilities.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because that would be the potential revenue that we would be receiving off of um the developments that we're gonna be looking at, the work that um the economic development we need has put forward. Um so that is um our way of paying it forward to them for that work that they put into marketing and, and building those developments.
Mr. Brooke, anything you'd like to add? You're the organization. We're grateful for the city support. Happy to be your partner. I was teaming it up to be the brother podcast. Have you heard the podcast, Building Together?
Yeah.
Yes. We're, we're grateful that, for everything you're doing that we lead. We have a motion in a second to approve this resolution. Uh any further discussion? It's a roll call vote. Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
The motion carries three to zero. Seven F, a resolution to approve the purchase of a Bobcat E thirty-five knee for the streets department. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Movement second to approve this resolution. Looks like uh they were gonna buy a, a, a large truck, was available this year and are instead gonna try for that next year. And instead buy this uh Bobcat, very versatile piece of equipment to us.
Do we know why is it for the town or the state?
Um I.
Company cancels.
So, yeah, they canceled um, we don't, we don't have an explanation as to why or how it got canceled, but it did. So what we did, so what Adam um recommended is that we would move this equipment um up in our, put in a revolving plan, we'll just put block years.
Cause it's not gonna be asked.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On their list.
Yeah.
Correct. The only thing I have to say is there's a typo in the title under Bobcat.
Bobcat.
Mm-hmm. If it matters.
Well, it's a small one, Bobcat. So we'll call it a Bobcat instead.
Essential nickname of this beauty.
Bobcat and thank you.
Um this will definitely be helpful. Um I, you know, through our discussions, um we're working, trying to um training staff and working staff to get back to performing um some of the uh work that we contract in with um Lynch Plumbing or individuals of doing that, you know, excavating for um sewer water and um likewise with the streets that they have. Um cause we have seen um some work havens due to some drainage underneath that you don't always see right away. And so, I mean, again, it's a very valuable, valuable piece of equipment that can be used throughout um our department, so.
Send Kate, send Kate.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh we have a motion in a second to approve this resolution. Any further discussion? If none, it's a roll call vote. Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yeah.
Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
The motion carries three to zero. We have seven D, a resolution setting the wage for the electric department journeyman lineman twenty-twenty-three, nine to four, forty dollars an hour. Non-exempt. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor and Council, um it was brought to my attention that there was um some pre-negotiation um with uh Mr. DeWor returning back to the city um as an employee. He was separated for um a, a temporary period of time and um and looked at the opportunity when we had posted for a position. Um so there had been pre-negotiations between previous city manager, electric superintendent and the employee um regarding the um wage. Upon review of, of doing the research on salary surveys and looking at um the government salary for that um the forty dollars an hour is a medium range for uh Mr. DeWor's position. So it's in line with um what the hourly rate would be. He had the certified. And it's also that the city, we invested in that employee. Um the certification came through the city. It was at the city's cost. So to be able to, you know, have the employee back from that investment um and retain that employee, that, that's a value within itself and um.
What's the total staff in the electric department now at this point? We have electric servers and three.
Three.
Under him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that a full thing?
Um there is, do, we're going to move to, it was approved that there would be an additional staff member brought on um with regards um to a succession plan within that department. Um because we have one employee that, you know, will be looking to retire in some years. So the discussion has been to bring on an additional staff member to start doing the succession.
Okay.
Um we have a current, one of the current employees is a uh a journeyman apprentice. When you have Ryan and Ed are the only certified journeyman that we have. John is the um, he's a mechanic for the, the diesel engines, but I don't wanna just say that's all he does because John is, you know, a jack of all trades when it comes to you know, specific things, but there are some things that he, he simply can't do because he's not a certified, certified one, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Is there any further discussion? If none, it's a roll call vote. Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
The motion carries three to zero. We have a resolution accepting the plans for the Meadows Development built as is with recommendation for the planning and zoning permission. We're gonna go back to the Meadows here. Um is there a motion to approve?
No, can that prove?
Second. It's moved in second to approve this resolution. And I would ask that you walk us through where we are on this because I think this part has been very confusing for, for all, certainly for me. Um with changes and how we're coming back to this, so. Why are we seeing this again or what's the, uh, I don't know, we've actually never seen these before, but.
Well, uh Mr. Mayor and Council, for my review, going through the documentation um over the site plan and the drainage study. And again, just making sure that we dotted the i's and crossed the t's as we're, you know, working through the process. Um I was unclear on the the, the project itself being a private property and how it was presented in that manner. So we received some clarification on that piece of it. However, when it was originally put before the Board of Adjustments for the type of homes and the site plan that was presented, the, the drain, the drainage or the collection basin was on the opposite side of the site plan. It was originally placed on Columbus. And um as it's built now, the drainage basin is now on Calhoun.
It needed to be larger, I think, that with engineering, is that what they?
So it's my understanding that the purpose that it was switched was. Was there was nowhere for that basin to connect into the city's sewer system because on Columbus. There is not a connection for that sewer. However, on Calhoun, there is a connection for that. And so that was my understanding as to why that basin was switched. Um, I just have some follow-up and we spoke to Mister Akers. Um, because the basin sets adjacent to the public sidewalk. And the street, um, so there's just, again, there'll be some follow-up discussion. I've been working with the building inspector, um. Asking maybe for fencing or something. So if we have folks walking along the sidewalk or. Somebody goes off the street, you know, they don't land in that basin.
And it's supposed to, it's intended to be a dry basin. So the only time that that will be full is that we have a huge amount of rain. So that basin is intended to be dry unless we have large amounts of rain.
And even when we don't though, it's a, it's a, it's a pretty big basin to stumble off into.
That's right. I think it's the cemetery, correct? The north.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Any further discussion? If none, that's a roll call vote. Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yeah.
Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Item seven I, resolution to accept the agreements between the US AR and the City of West Liberty for We Care. Is there a motion to approve?
Okay. Second.
Moving seconded to approve this resolution. Uh, this is an exciting project. The first city in the nation, I understand, to have partnership like this. And uh, Councilmember Dominguez, you've done a lot of work on this. Would you wanna just, again, and we've talked about this a few times, but just here, kind of again, just. Catch us up to speed on it?
Yeah, so there's two agreements, one with the company that the um. Department of Defense is providing the funds where, which is We Care. Um, and then this is the part of the agreement from the Department of the Defense. Um, on their terms, so we. We already approved the We Care agreement, how we're gonna partner with that company. And now this is the one um for the United States government. And just to recap, I know you've all heard this, but um basically they're partnering with us so that we can provide um. Resources, uh childcare funding for any uh active US National Guard or Iowa Reserve members for their family. Um, within a hundred miles of West Liberty.
Pretty neat program.
Yeah. Yeah, it is very neat. And a group of us will be going to Washington DC. Yeah. On August, the ceremony is August seventeenth, so um for signing ceremony.
Yeah. Pretty neat thing. That's a feather in the feather in the cap of the city, for sure.
And I did reach out um to the Iowa National Guard representative, and I'll continue to work um. With um the United States. Government through the National Guard affairs and the reserves. Um, and likewise with the readiness and it goes through um a lot of our our military um units. So we can make sure that we're getting this information marketed um to those folks, so.
Fantastic. We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Any further discussion or questions?
So the the highlighted stuff is just things that will be filled in.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah.
That's it.
I have to say. The. At at the local level, we don't often say have agreements that have include a signature line, someone signing for the United States. I saw that.
Pretty neat.
That's pretty neat. Yeah, it's definitely, definitely new. Okay, again, we have a a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? It's a roll call vote. Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
The resolution, the motion passes uh three to zero. We are striking item seven J as we did in the uh in the beginning, moving on to the seven K. A resolution to approve the schedule for the public hearing bidding and estimate of cost for the Noddy Circle and Division Street project. Is there a motion for proof?
No, true. Second.
Moving seconded to approve this resolution. Um, Mr. Foley, is that your?
That is what I guess. Okay, so that's the one where we. We basically took out Gibson Street and we said we'll do Gibson Street next year. There's problems with the sewer and some other thing. The cost that we've done so far is I believe two hundred and seventy. Remember? Uh, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. So what we want to do tonight is just basically approve going forward with that design. That design is gonna include sidewalk on one half. Of Division Street, not the other half until we get the uh the the right of way in place. The. East half of Division. We haven't approached landowners or anything like that until you give us the approval to go forward. Um, there are a couple of the very large trees that will have to be removed. Um. My surveyor says one of them look like they'll probably be happy with them removed, but you never know until you knock on the door. And we haven't done that yet. So we wanted to get approval to move forward, and then we bring this back August fifteenth when we have the plans and specs complete.
You bring it back when you have the plans and specs complete, so the the plans that we're seeing here.
Their draft.
Are pretty preliminary.
Well, I'd say they're in the, we. We were in the eighty to ninety percent range.
So are you saying that you are gonna proceed with? Uh, with building the sidewalk all the way? I mean, is that the plan? I think you're gonna.
On the.
Try to get.
On the east side of Division sidewalk goes all the way.
Right.
On the west side. When we come back and do Gibson, we could do that, but we have probably a lot more. We have to purchase right away for that.
We can't do that now, though, while we're doing this street?
We could do it now, but you wouldn't, you'd have to delay bids. You wouldn't be able to keep on this schedule, and that usually takes a little more time.
Well, can we start it now? Cause otherwise, as soon as we do Gibson next, next year, we're gonna do the same thing.
We could start it.
You know what I mean?
We can start the process.
Start the process so that it's ready.
But we should, it's it's funding because when we originally did this capital improvement.
No, I understand. That's why we cut Gibson, right? Cause of the funding.
Yeah.
But I wonder if we could start the process of that, getting that right of way sorted out.
We are in that process as we speak. So I've had my surveyors getting more surveyed, cause they. They're not pleased with what we get when we think it's a temporary easement. When they know they have to do acquisition, they want more pins so they can be perfect. So we are in that process. So what we'd like to do is. Come back to you on the fifteenth with plans and specs, and then we could probably also have a a. Easement type drawing, or no, acquisition type drawing for you to look at that would show exactly how much you have to acquire. And when you acquire that, what's it gonna do to that neighbor's fence?
And don't we need to talk about that stuff in post-session with their attorney? Or?
No, that, that's just a land.
Yeah, well, that can be a public discussion.
Okay.
Um, for the purpose of of the right of way um for use of public right of way.
Okay.
Um, so.
Making sure.
No, no, that's a good question. It's a good question. Um, but we just don't want to find ourselves in a position where, um, you know.
Most of your land.
How valuable is that pro? Property to.
Most of your landowners start to know pretty quickly what's going on, cause they see our surveyors surveying, and believe me, he's asked a million questions. All the guys, what are you doing this for? What's going?
Obviously, that's a delicate.
But I think.
There, but it's part of living in a city that we kind of agree on.
But I think if we could go out for plans and specs and get the. Get the Gibson Street and the Division Street improvements done or underway and not stop on getting the. The land acquired would be very wise, cause like you said, land can, land being acquired, I've seen it many times, it becomes the holdup. So we don't want it to be the holdup next year.
Next year would be my concern.
So if we keep plugging away now, we keep trying to get it.
And then a lot would enter into our budget, so we're building our budget, you know, based on those. Yeah.
I do have another. That sounds good. I do know, I I don't really, sorry. I do have another question about. Um, about sidewalk, are are sidewalks being redone at all on like on Noddy Circle or?
Just the ADA portion. So whenever we had to change ADA to make sure they were ADA accessible. So any of the ramps going on to the sidewalks, the sidewalks themselves were left alone.
What about? Um, so two, two intersections I wanted to ask you about, Division and Noddy Circle Drive.
That intersection looks like it's been done. It looks like it was done. I don't know how long ago, but if you go out there and look at it, it's definitely newer concrete.
Maybe the city do those ADA ramps already, maybe?
Um, they did.
Well, my only question about it is, and that maybe this is um. Not, maybe this is out of scope or whatever for what we're doing here, but. I feel like it would be most appropriate if the Division Street sidewalks continued to cross. Noddy Triple Drive. Right there. Even though it's a T, you know, as it is right now.
I understand what you're saying. Yeah, I looked at that too.
I feel like. And you see those intersections, you know, and you're you're. You're riding your bike along the sidewalk and you wanna get there, but there's no actual, no actual crossing unless you were to go all the way down around the circle or all the way down to Elm Street.
So what you're saying is make it cross the road. Which does mean we need. Um, four more accesses, four more street access to come up onto the sidewalk, which isn't, isn't the end of the earth. We can put those in.
I mean, that would be my recommendation.
Will drive that price up a little.
Right there.
I'm the engineer. I say, can you do it?
That's where you're gonna cross.
There's no sidewalk there.
There's, there's sidewalk this way, but there's no, there's no way to cross. There's no crossing right here or there. You see what I mean? There's no sidewalk right there.
Got you. Mister Mayor, my recommendation is, is if we can have Mister Foley take a look at what you're requesting. Then we have an additional cost because we really.
Only reason.
The budget.
I understand what you're saying, the budget. And the reason we didn't do it, now that I'm looking at it, it's clearly new concrete, newer concrete. So we would have been tearing up new concrete to do it. Not saying it's something you shouldn't be done. I understand why you wouldn't wanna do it.
That makes sense. I guess, uh. Um. I guess my question would be, if not now, then when, right? And so.
Why don't, why don't we come back and on the fifteen, we'll have a, we could have a cost for you and have it. That we could add it in as an alternate at that time if you want.
That sounds good. That sounds good. Okay. We got my question to that. Anybody else? All right, we have a little uh. Motion and a second to approve this resolution. The schedule for the public hearing bidding and estimate of cost for Noddy Circle Divisie Project. Any further discussion? Uh, Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yeah.
Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
The motion carries three to zero. We have item seven L, a resolution approving the travel expenses to the Pentagon for the signing of the We Care agreement. Is there a motion to approve? And then we'll talk about the comment. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's moving seconded to approve this resolution. So, uh. Correct me if I'm wrong. I think so. They would, they've asked, the Department of Defense has invited representatives from city to be there to sign this agreement at the Pentagon. Um. Uh. Councilmember Dominguez is the reason why this happened, and so she should be there. Uh, city manager Gertz should be there and also is very familiar with what childcare for military family would mean, uh, as as, as are you, I believe, as well. Um. Uh, they invited me there undeservedly, but because I'm the mayor, and so I I accepted that. And I believe you also invited our economic development representative to join us as well. So it's the four, it's the four of us who are looking at going. Um, and that's what the, that's what that's for. That sounds good to everybody.
Yeah, I just wanna add how important it is to talk about our community with people that are in really high places like this. Because if it weren't for, you know, and we are coming and doing interviews with us. The person in California would have never heard about West Liberty, and they would have never contacted me for the opportunity. So I just think the more we're able to, you know, go and put ourselves around these tables with these people who are looking to give money to communities like ours. Is um an opportunity we just wouldn't pass out. And on another scale from a military base, uh, or lack of being on a military base. It's important for those leaders to also understand the impact and the support of a community to. Um, the reserve and the National Guard members who live and work, you know, in our community. And what we're willing to do in that support, um, because um. The National Guard and the reserves rely a lot on that community support around them. In order to make a successful, you know, support of those individuals that are serving for that time, making sure that we have that. You know, organization and support within our local community. So it's, it's a a partnership that. Gets forgot about or overlooked many times because we're busy in our day-to-day lives. And, you know, we're not necessarily always caught up in, you know, more on a national level of the news versus people that are our neighbors. Um, that live and work, not just in our communities, but our surrounding rural areas too.
Definitely a high-profile moment for City of West Liberty. Um, this is not to exceed five thousand dollars of the travel expense request. There's a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Any further discussion?
And I would just add, I, that is a pretty high number. I've already been able to um negotiate under that with some special government reading. On two of our airline tickets in our state, and we would not have to use, um, we, we can utilize public transportation because I was able to get us within. Six minutes from our destination that's there, so. So I've been working really diligently to try to make sure, you know, minimizing the cost.
Yeah.
For the event, so.
Any further discussion?
And as long as Councilmember Dominguez doesn't mind that I won't change clothes the whole time that they're there, that I say, just kidding. I won't tell if you won't. Okay.
Should Councilmember Dominguez abstain from this? Would you recommend that since she's gonna be traveling or or we can't do that?
No, no, we have to.
Okay.
Well, and again, I mean, she's not, she more than just her herself, so.
Fair enough.
Be okay.
It's a roll call vote. Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. And we have lastly, seven M, resolution to accept change order number three. Rev one and the amount of sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents. To add to the Columbus Street sidewalk improvements. Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Motion to approve? Second, moving seconded to approve the resolution. Mister Foley, if you'd uh.
The last time I told you, it was like uh seven thousand dollars higher than that. And we looked at two things to try to get the price down. One, we looked at trying not to move the fire hydrant.
Yeah.
And basically what we found out is because of the grades, we'd still have to adjust the fire hydrant, and then we'd have to make the ramp longer. For the sidewalk to become ADA accessible, and we thought the cost would be the same. You might as well move the fire hydrant, you'll have a way better product. So we decided not to recommend moving the fire to not recommend not moving the fire.
And I recommend not moving.
Yes, not, not. The next one. Was a one that's caught me before and it caught me again. Um, I noticed right away that the seating seemed high, and I think I mentioned it to you at the last council, so. I had my best engineer look at it. He looked at the AutoCAD file and he redid the quantities and said quantities are right, they're exactly right on the plans that, cause he didn't do it. One of our CAD techs did it. And he said, no, it's perfect. So I sent it to you guys. And it still bothered him and bothered me, cause I was like, it's just something's not right. And. So what happened was the. The contractor had an early set of plans that we didn't have it right on. And we had put it in square yards instead of cubic yards, so we had it as two thousand, two hundred and twenty square yards. When we made the final plan, sent to the contractor and sent to the state, we had changed it to two forty-seven. Jay Simon used his older plans and used the twenty-two, twenty, and we didn't catch it. Cause it just all looked right. The amount was the same amount he was paying. Because it just all looked right. The amount was the same amount he was paying on his other one. So then I caught I Eric caught it at about four forty-five today. He said, hey, I found your mistake. And I said, oh, it's not too late. I haven't left yet. So at five o'clock, I fired off an email with six o'clock. Five o'clock somewhere.
Not here.
I said, I think we uh I think we found at least part of it. So I I do still recommend. And I I would like to tell you too, that even if you would have approved it, theoretically, you would not have paid it because that's a measurable item our inspectors measure. And so they would have been measuring and saying, I don't know how you goofy engineers came up with the wrong number, but here's what we're paying. So that has happened, but at least now you know. So it's very, very it's closer to what the estimate was. We think you should go forward. We think we should get this done. This does have two issues going on. One is the state of Iowa's DOT still hasn't approved. They will soon as I push them. And we have landowner issues now, opposite of the one on um on Gibson and Division in that you're the the um right away is on DOT property.
Okay.
Not on anybody else's property. So people won't like it, but they won't be able to stop it.
Installing the sidewalk along Columbus is where that's come up.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, you could get some one, you could get some emails of people not being pleased.
Sure.
And and one in particular. I don't I don't know of others that would be, but one particularly I talked to.
Okay. Appreciate you having those conversations. I feel like the well, you know how it feels about sidewalks. I do have a question about this sidewalk though. Um so and this is probably just because I don't understand quite how it works, but like this is this is going all the way. I'm looking at the map here along Columbus Street and connecting to the Rainbow Drive.
Thank you.
Intersection. So you can be walking on a nice lighted ten foot wide trail from Dutton, you cross Rainbow Drive if you wanted to, um, you know, walk down to Gary D D or to.
Yeah.
JB's um. How would you walk to Subway is my question? Is that something where they would need to put in their own sidewalk to intersect with this? Or how would you? Because right now I'm at the ball field with my team and you see the subway right up the street there and you say, let's go meet at Subway. With this plan, the only way to get to get to Subway is by walking in the street through the grass.
Yeah, so typically we put sidewalks trails on public property and so that a business would typically have to send a sidewalk to it. So that would be the normal way.
Yeah, we would do this and then they would say, okay, we're gonna like to attach to it so we can get people there.
They don't have to. But yeah, it's not the only way. The city could do it, but.
City could do it and put it in the plan and just pay for it and.
Well, you'd be on somebody else's property though, so you'd have to get property approval.
Yeah.
It's all right, I'm not I'm not the city manager, but I've got to say, because I run into it all the time. It does set a precedent that you will usually get others um wondering why you did that when when you don't want to do it with somebody else.
Sure.
That that comes up a lot in my business.
Yeah, why don't you give me a sidewalk?
Right.
Well, certainly they would get tired of people walking through the grass.
They very much could, right?
I mean, I hope. I don't know who owns that subway, but I might. I hope they would, but.
The only thing the city could do is take the sidewalk up to the driveway, right up the uh right up the right away. So you still stay in our right away up to their driveway. And then you're dropping them off onto the driveway. It's not ideal.
Ugly.
I mean, yeah, I do.
It's it's not even safe, truthfully.
Yeah, that's the thing. And I don't want to deliver into the driveway.
I would just leave it and let them walk over the grass until somebody decides not to.
The owner has always has been very good to work with. I mean, it's something that we could certainly open a discussion up with them. Um.
You used to have a program for redoing sidewalks, but.
But we don't have a program for that.
Or for installing sidewalks.
And there's several portions of city where that needs to happen, certain, you know, undeveloped lots and things like that that really need to be looked at, but so this kind of made it fall into.
So I do another another thought could be um to if you did get a good bid on Rainbow, I'm not against this at all, would be to take the sidewalk up, like I said, and have a deal with him that he brings it from there to along the grass to his door.
Yeah.
So the the door, you're so you're saying the line that's in the the front of their building.
Right.
Goes all the way down to Rainbow Drive and then we come along the road to connect.
You'd come up to the road to maybe right at the edge of that of where the parking lot is. And then he would drive, take a sidewalk from his doorway, straight across his grass to to match where the city would come up to.
She, is it a she? Well, I thought it was a she.
Do you think we could just reach out and talk to the owner and see what they?
We could set up, we could set a meeting with him. I think it's a partnership.
See how they would want to approach that. I think we'd.
As counsel would. I I have his information if you don't.
Oh, no, I am your.
He's a pretty verbal guy.
Yeah.
No, I think that would be a good move though to reach out to him and say, hey, maybe we could we could take the sidewalk up the up the city park that you need to.
Just push winter. Well, no, I mean, there's a nightmare during winter to have to.
Well, and just with with the mayor saying, I mean, the benefit is is that you have individuals that are at the complex that are going to be hungry. And this is a marketing thing too, is that, you know, you're you're providing a safe, you know, walkability right to your door.
Yes.
Um, and so, I mean, from that perspective, and then like Leo said, you know, further discussion of saying we'll meet you somewhere in the middle, you know, but again, see what that because sometimes what um we we have to make it very clear is that once we do this, then they also have the responsibility of maintaining it. Because sometimes there's a confusion saying, well, you put it in, I didn't, you know, so. But those are some things that we can I can open up a discussion.
Even even this sidewalk that we have along his property, um, it will probably become a in the winter, who's gonna plow that?
Correct.
Become an issue.
Will it become or it's known? It's that would be the property owner's responsibility.
It might be known, but no, none of them will agree to it and like it, especially something like this on the side like that.
Yeah.
And you know, I I've done a lot of I've done sidewalks in people's backyards because of the way it works and they almost always fight it because they're they're used to that sidewalk in their front yard, but.
Yeah.
I I think this, I mean, and if I owned, I can't, you know, I feel if I owned the subway, there'd be sidewalks all over.
Well, I mean.
Direct sidewalks from downtown.
You know, and if that conversation comes up and then if they're contracting somebody to plow their parking lot, I mean, so it's an additional.
Yeah.
And you have them clear your sidewalk too at the same time now.
I think.
We can open it up.
The community center is a great example of this. The community center invested um eighteen and a half thousand dollars, I believe it was, to redo their sidewalk that's along the highway.
Hmm.
And frankly, connects to other portions of the sidewalk that are um that that need work, but but they wanted to really do their side right and then involved putting in a new culvert and um, a lot of work. It's not a small project and they invested in it. And did it right for the for the community, you know, and I think that's the kind of thing that we want to encourage here. So we need to we all pitch in to make the city walkable, safe and healthy. We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yeah.
Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. All seven motion to again.
Um, one more. Just real quick, I wanted to add, um, I had just got this today, the final discussion um from All American about closing the streets. Um, so I'm just gonna give my that email. Um, if you want to talk to it a little bit, um we started a discussion over a week ago, um, trying to move up a timeline for completing our completing the project. So this is an opportunity that we presented with um Mr. Keith um coordinating with activities at Dutton. Um, but as you can see here, what they're talking about is um, and I'll let Leo speak more to it because the you would be in Kate confirmed the plans, so.
We um, we've been talking to All American, trying to get them to discuss how to make sure they keep the schedule, this project on schedule. So they really would like to get Rainbow open completely. They like to pave full width. We told them that they had to keep one lane open at all times. We have already been letting them do it at certain times as long as they make them make make things to go here. They wanted to do full width. We told them that if they wanted to do full width, they had to keep traffic open to the Dutton Park at all times. So that's what the red line through is a gravel access that will get you up Maxon to the park a hundred percent of the time. And I thought that was a good move on their part. And then that also says they could they can they can pay full width, so they're thinking they will be done by the end of August with the road part of Rainbow will be completely open at that time, not the trail and not some of the stuff we're doing on Max.
Because it's easily easier doing the whole thing than half of it and then half of it.
It is and 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 to their defense, I do think you get a better product. Because now you get there full width paving and it does look better and everything else. So I recommend going forward. I think we talked to Nick and Adam and they're they're they were satisfied that with this program that they can get traffic in and out of Dutton. There won't be any issues there. The one call you might get is somebody coming from the east that that road will be shut down now and they have to go around. But again, what we'll have them sign it well ahead of time and what we find out is that usually the city manager fields one or two calls, people figure it out and it gets done.
How so? How are the people that live out in the country there?
Yeah.
Will they have to go to the all the way around to the highway that goes down over them?
Yes, that's how that have to do.
Hmm.
But it's a temporary um in order, I mean, the end result is, yeah, yeah.
And they might have, they we told them, we didn't specify which way, but we specified you have to keep one lane of traffic open. So the way they were gonna do that, they might have had to go around anyway, because they probably were gonna keep traffic open this way.
No.
But they probably would have had to and and this shortens that time period.
Yeah.
Although Josh, you were saying something.
Um, just financial definitely help with that. Yeah, I know there's a lot of speeding along that route too, especially where the gravel hits the. So.
Yeah, that could be some expensive concrete if they're not paying attention.
Yeah, he already, he already has it on the other side. When we did that a very long time ago, right in front of Bill Simon's house, they paved it. They went to bed that night thinking they did a good job and somebody drove rue barricades and into their thing. And you could still see the marks where they had to redo it.
I think I've seen those. I'm gonna go look at that again now.
That's that happens.
What I what I I thought was humorous is that it was that the the guy that did it was sitting in his bedroom right there.
Again, in communication with uh social media website and um you know, if any council member, mayor, you know, any other additional, but um again, the contractors will put up the signage to our information of retaining to that.
Sounds like there's been a sense of that. Okay, we're ready to go.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Move to adjourn.
Second. Move in seconds to adjourn, all of your favorites say aye.
Aye.
Getting adjourned.